Felt allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Why's the door open?
Because I didn't shut it tight, I guess, I forgot about it being tougher than it used to be.
Close tight.
He's a finger smasher now.
Thank you.
Got to be careful.
I do like that a lot, so introduction, please.
So John Malcolm's here online, and then we have Mike Future, Bob Jones, Jessica Van Or, Rich Hewitt, and I'm Kristin Powers, and then we also have Frank Nelson, and Tammy Lewis, and Joyce, I apologize your last name.
Perry.
Perry. And, I'm sorry, I was.
Frank Lewis.
Frank Lewis, nice to meet you. And that's everyone. And for additions, so we received a new application from the Canvas Control Board that needs approval or review from the board. We also received the grant agreement for the pedestrian, the sidewalk grant, so that needs to be signed, and then we have some updates on the search for the Highway Department positions, so that's personnel, so a quick executive session to talk about.
Okay.
And I don't think any deletions. Yep, and that's up. And the minutes that need approval are from January 24.
Okay. Who do we have on, zooming in on us tonight?
Deb and John.
Okay, just Deb and John, alright, thank you.
I'll move to approve the minutes.
I'll second that.
All in favor, John?
Yes.
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 Carrie. Tammy?
Yes. I'm here to ask the town to please authorize Green Mountain to put a streetlight back in front of my home. I live in the old Knowles house that sits back. Years ago as kids, there was a streetlight there. When the Bakers owned it, they kept shooting it out, so Central Vermont removed it. Central Vermont will not put it back, said I could pay $13 a month to have it put back in.
Okay.
I need the town approval, you guys, to contact them and say, can you put it back? We have a hard time being found. Rescue squads driven by us, state troopers are driven by us, because we don't have a streetlight to show that head of our driveway, my numbers are there. They're on the house, they're on the mailbox, they're on the fence, but it's just because I sit back from everybody else, it's hard to be seen.
Okay. What had happened is several years ago, the power company came and did a study, and they designed the whole streetlight system in the town, and that's why that streetlight was removed to their design. So we approved that study, I don't know, probably six or eight years ago anyways, and that's when we switched all over to the LEDs.
On either side of my house, there's an empty pole. So there's three empty poles, where I already talked to Green Mountain, and they said every other pole has a streetlight within village limits. I said, well, I'm village limits, my pole doesn't have one.
Okay.
In front of the pastor's house is one, and down farther in front of Tim's lasagna's is another empty pole. There always was a streetlight there growing up, because we could play as far as the streetlights, and that's why I brought Joyce with me, because she was another town. She says, yes, you know, the streetlights went that far. We need a streetlight. I have a lot of health issues, the squad is at my house frequently, if it's not Stacy Zeller's on, they can't find me. Stacy was going to be present tonight, but something came up, he couldn't be here. He said he's not opposed to talking with you guys to let you guys know that, yes, our driveway is a difficult one to find, there's nothing more we can do other than our spotlight on our house. I myself have been in another world and driven by my driveway. You know, it's not visible and easy to be seen.
Okay, so what we'll need to do is we'll have to get the study out and review it, and then talk to Green Mountain Power and see why they dropped that light, and go from there, and see what the cost would be to add that light to our streetlight bill. So we will get back to you on that, we'll work through that and see how that all plays into the cost that the town will incur and such, and then we can move forward and see how we can progress.
Anybody have any other questions or comments that we can add to that, or a different feeling than I just voiced, or?
I mean, I wasn't on the board six or eight years ago, so I didn't know that we'd done that study.
Yeah.
But yeah, I mean, I don't think there's any harm in talking to Green Mountain Power about it, and if we could do it, and it wouldn't really be much cost.
Right.
But then if it would be a lot of cost, we'd have to rethink it, I guess, yeah.
Just before we can say, yes, we'll do it, we have to understand what we're going to get into and what the cost will be and stuff like that, because I know that when we pulled some lights, there was a few lights that they said were no longer necessary for the town to put up, to pay for.
Well, like you said, I mean, I know years ago, because I lived three doors down, the Bakers would shoot it out. They would put it up that night, within the next day it was shot out, it was gone, they were back repairing it. And the lady representative that I spoke to from Green Mountain said, yeah, we'll gladly put it back, we'll charge you $13 a month. I said, I'm not paying for my own streetlight, I'm a taxpayer. And I know I've spoken to Deb, and Deb said Bob's driven by a couple of times, felt he didn't see an issue.
Will you report, I'm sorry to interrupt, but you, I was told your streetlight was out, and I drove all over town, I said, there is no streetlight there, that's why it's out.
It's not out, it's gone.
Yeah, I reported back, it's no streetlight there, so that's why it's out.
Yeah, we were confused about what it was for a little while.
Okay. Nancy Marleena was the one that headed the Energy Committee, that's why I asked her about it a few weeks, a few meetings ago, so maybe we could get the information, could you see if you could get the information from her?
Yeah, I'll reach out to her.
And we can see who, see who we talk to at Green Mountain Power to discuss it, so, or you can find out, give us the right person to.
I'm sure I can.
To discuss. Does anybody want to ask, or anybody want to take on this job, or?
Was it me?
What's that?
It sounded like it was me.
It sounded like.
I'm taking it, I'll take it on.
You'll take it on, you'll call Green Mountain Power and get the information?
I'll get us started.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
And you'll email me, good?
Yes, I'll let you know what I find out, and we'll put it on the agenda. I can't make any decisions myself, but I'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting, and I'll let you know as I get more info. And if you have anything that comes up to any people that you've contacted at Green Mountain Power, that would be helpful.
Okay, me too. All right, I'll name a number written at the house.
Yeah, you can just shoot it over to me in an email, and we'll figure it out.
All right.
Cool. Thank you, thank you.
All right, thank you. Hi Joyce.
Hi.
Good to see you.
Just that Chris Ross and John Weiss were a huge help with getting this TV set up, so we got all the pieces put together, and the mount size was wrong, and I was like just stumbling with it for like six months, as you all know, and Chris, actually, John came down and measured it for me, and Chris welded up another piece, so we didn't have to order another piece, and they made us a mount, and got it all set up today, so.
Okay.
Was super nice of both of them. We did come to find out that the iPad definitely doesn't work. The research we had done, it's a connection issue between the owl and the iPad, so the iPad will definitely work for the Highway Department, like we had talked about, but in order to get, we'll have to get some sort of a computer, like a small computer, to talk nicely between owl and the TV, so it just, it doesn't like tablets. So that's the next thing.
Is that something that Vinnie can help you?
Yeah, I mean, I have not had any luck communicating with Vinnie, so maybe you can help to facilitate that.
Is there any particular kind of computer we need?
Just.
It just has to be a small one that can run?
Yeah, so really basic laptop, it can't be a tablet.
Okay.
And it needs to be HDMI, compatibility, and obviously video and audio, so.
Let me check, I use this site, Newegg, which is, I've bought a lot of computers from, and let me check on there and see if they've got what, they have a lot of computers, and they've been very reliable.
Okay.
So I can like maybe send you a few links to some possibilities.
Yeah, I know nothing about any of that, admittedly, so it doesn't need to be anything crazy, because it just needs to be, I think it'll exclusively run Zoom.
Yeah, I've done the computer purchasing for my small business, which granted is only like two computers, but hey, it's something.
Well, right, I know enough about it, but I don't know if we want to do ARPA, or how we want to do that.
Well, you can get a good one for like less than $600, so it's not a lot.
But then that way Frank's dreams will come true, and this will live here, and so anybody can use, it'll be the town Zoom.
The setup.
I will appreciate that for running Planning Commission meetings, because I always have to bring my own computer down.
Yeah, this is my personal computer that I've been using forever.
Yeah, we're in the same boat.
So it'll all live here, and anybody that needs can use it.
When they're done talking, Frank?
So yeah, a couple of, that's good, so far, so good, we're getting there.
Super, thank you. Frank?
I went on the Owl wide site for other purposes, but there's an owl 3, it's brand new, it allows for multiple owls to be interconnected, but they were advertising that they had full support for the iPad, but you had to download some software from them to operate on the iPad, and it gives you more granular control than any other computer that on that site, is what they were saying.
That's with a different owl.
For the owl. Is this owl 1, or is this the oldest owl, or is your?
It's not owl 3, that's all I'm doing.
They were also saying it would work with.
This is a barn owl, you were probably talking about a screech owl or something. We're going to use that for the Highway Department, they need that, we're going to get the other computer, thank you for your input.
Well, go with the owl 3, with ARPA, and get another thing.
Why do they need another owl?
Because then if you like it in a bigger meeting.
Once a year.
No.
We don't need two owls.
Is there anything in the zoning administrators' report, can you read that for us, please?
So Nancy is not able to attend tonight, obviously, there's no new permits or activities since the last meeting, processing permits and supporting documentation to the NEMRIT program. To date, all of the 2022 permits have been scanned, and Nancy anticipates completing 2021 by the end of the month. Since we discussed using ARPA funds for the scanning, she wants to know if she should keep track of the hours she spends scanning separately from regular zoning business, whether or not we want to pay her.
Our ARPA expert.
ARPA funds.
We can, I'm just wondering how much we want to, we should probably determine how much we want to use for this scanning, because I know there have been a number of things that we also were planning on using that for, like the town match for the sidewalks, and we wanted to have some set aside for the eventual upgrades to the wastewater, so I'm concerned that we're going to run through all of it.
Yes, we kind of, we kind of almost need to make some kind of budget, start working on a budget for.
Let me work with Julie on that, because last year she gave me the report of how much we used in the previous fiscal year, and we're going to have to do that report again in March or April, so I'm going to make a note for myself.
It's probably a benefit if she does keep track of that, because I don't think it would be a big inconvenience to her.
No, it'll be easy for her, and we have to do it anyhow, like I said, for the.
And then we can decide whether we feel we got enough money in ARPA, or we're just pay for it out of.
Yeah.
Frank?
I thought you guys budgeted for a bump up for that purpose anyways. That's right, I remember something clicking, that was discussing.
We, I know that we budgeted a little bit, we budgeted the full amount for the zoning administrator, yeah, but again, I'll get with Julie on that, to see what would be the best way to pay for that, but I think, my thought is in the time, for the time being, perhaps if she did count those hours separately, just in case we need to.
So maybe we can advise her to keep track of those hours, she'll keep getting paid out of the zoning budget as it stands right now, but she could keep track, and we could always do a little.
Yeah, depending on what would be the best way from the funds.
Okay. Do you want, would you like me to tell her that, or do you want to follow up with Nancy when you follow up with Julie?
If you could tell Nancy, I will talk to Julie, that would be most convenient, I think, if, that's all right.
So on that same topic, Nancy said it has become apparent that this process, the process of zoning, is a one-person operation, as the data input and document scanning has to occur simultaneously, therefore she will be doing all of the data entry, so no.
She doesn't need to bring in someone else, okay.
And that's it for zoning.
Any more questions about the zoning? Okay, and nothing from the Planning Commission, right?
No.
Okay, Road Foreman's report?
Yes, so we just have a short little report this week. The 153 project is, road stabilization project is finished, we managed to get.
You did.
Yeah, both sides, filled in, backfilled, so that went really well, better than expected. We got the bushings replaced on the grader, and they're hauling some gravel and stockpiling some gravel from Hartford, so.
I see that we've been keeping up on the salt, we just hauled it ourselves, and it.
We've been saving a bunch of money, and it works well.
Might as well, and there's not, there's a lot of stuff to do anyways for this time of the year, when the weather's like that, they might as well be sitting in the cab with a truck. Oh, good.
And UVM reached out to Dale, because UVM's doing a study on salt sheds through the state of Vermont, because apparently there's no record of any salt storage all through the state, so they're reaching out to all the towns to figure out where towns are storing their salt, and how they're storing them, so they're going around and going to be visiting all the different municipalities, and just making a note and map and everything, so Dale communicated with them about it, and wanted the board to be aware that that was happening.
I knew that, that's been a subject of interest from the, because of the runoff and stuff like that, for quite a number of years, and there was some grants out for salt sheds, and I don't know about what, maybe Rupert was able to build that from the.
I think the challenge that this town has faced is they couldn't decide whether they wanted it in pollat, or west pollat, or in the gravel pit, you know, I just think that we need to figure that out. We're not going to get two of them, I don't imagine, so we got to decide when we get one, where it's going to go. So I think that, I think it has been on the table before.
Oh, yeah.
But I think that it just couldn't be agreed upon where it was going to go.
It doesn't really make sense to put it in pollat if we're going to build a new barn in the gravel pit, so.
So I think that's been the issue, I know it has been on the table in the past.
Actually, I can remember Clarence talking about it, and that was quite a few years ago, but, so, all right, we'll keep that high, and everything else seems to be running along decent? Okay.
Yeah, we've got a guy on call too, which has been, he's been very helpful, and healed them. Perry hasn't been feeling that good, so he's, the guy on calls, ready to go out for this storm, so that's worked out well.
Okay, good. Any other questions for Rhodes?
Oh, the position for the Highway Department crew member has been reposted. It was paused for a little while as we were figuring out where we were at, but just an announcement to the world, because it's back up, so.
Okay.
No activity as of yet, but there are some other avenues that I've been looking into as to where else we might be able to post it.
Okay. Assessors' report?
Yes. Do you all have one too? So we received.
We got it by email.
Yes, right, I forwarded it to you.
Yeah, I got it.
They received the TaxMac proposal, which is here, from Cartographic Associates for the 2023-24 grant list year. Lisa has reviewed the contract and approved it for select board signatures, and they request that the board sign and return to the assessors' office. They've sent out letters to all taxpayers who have open permits for new construction and/or renovations, and have begun doing inspections, and will continue through the middle of April if we aren't able to finish before April 1st. They continue to have issues with the CAMA, which is the Computer-Assisted Mass Appraisal software, and are continuing to experience problems concerning data entry or inspections. We have contacted a mentor for assistance with this issue, but have not connected with an IT person yet. The search continues for options for a townwide reappraisal, with so many towns ordered to do a reappraisal, currently more than half of all Vermont towns are under order to reappraise, there aren't enough companies available to do the work, and currently appraisal companies are booking out for towns between 2027 and 2028. Lisa will be working in the office one Monday each month, and as necessary from home, and Karen will continue to be in the office on Mondays and alternate Wednesdays. And that's that, and then this is the maintenance proposal, that they'd like the board to sign.
How many people get to sign that? Oh, we got plenty room.
I hope you all make a motion.
Okay, so this TaxMac proposal is $2,000 for the map, and then $20 if property record cards, including building sketches, are provided, the client shall pay an extra, additional $20 per building added or changed. So what do you think? Somebody want to make a motion?
Sure, I'll move that we, I don't know what the motion is exactly, that we sign this map, TaxMac?
Degree, TaxMac Maintenance Proposal.
Okay.
I'll second that.
TaxMac Maintenance Proposal.
From CAI Technologies. All in favor, John?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Carrie?
So regarding the reappraisal, I heard that because so many towns in Vermont are having to reappraise all at once, the state is, the legislature is considering, they haven't, they haven't put the bill forward yet, but they're considering a bill for the state to just run reappraisals, and not make towns do it.
Wow.
Yeah, to like just to make a schedule statewide, and just have the state hire people out and send them around to do the reappraisal.
And not charge the town.
Yeah, and not charge, I mean, right now they give us the money for it, right? So they would stop giving towns the money for that, and they would just do it.
Because we budgeted some money for that as well.
Yeah, we budgeted some money for it as well, so I don't know when that would go into effect, so.
I don't see any work done, but.
Yeah, well, maybe not, but what they could do then would be to space it out, so it wouldn't be like half the towns all come do it once, right? They could be like, all these towns are going to be in odd, every five years or something.
Yeah, how would they set up the grieving?
Yeah, that would be the thing to figure out.
I'm suspecting by the looks, it sounds like it's at least four years out anyway, so we got plenty of time.
Yeah, so I think, I read that through and looked at it, and I was thinking, we just continue on how we're doing, and if this happens, it'll be like four or five years out, for sure.
Just bonus, bonus for us, for sure. All right, anything else? Town Clerk's memo?
Yep, I'm here.
Hi Deb.
Hi Deb.
Hi. Here we go. We are conformed with the Meadowway Community School for the use of the multipurpose room for the informational meeting. The warning has been published in the Lakes Region Free Press, and is also posted at the required places. The town report has been mailed, one for household. The ballots have been proofed and approved and are in production. There's one excess late permit for Bob. The town office will be closed on February 20th for President's Day. One thing I didn't have on my memo that is new this year, if any of our liquor dispensaries come to you, the Department of Liquor Control is now asking all of the licensees to go to an online portal for their application process, so I'm not getting the paperwork to send to them. I have sent them the information to go to the portal, I think we have one, two, three or four that actually have liquor licenses, so they're going to need to go onto the online portal, and then I would suspect that something will come to the town for you guys to sign. It's the first, this is the first year for it, so I don't know what happens after they do their online stuff. So I added that because, just in case you guys get any questions, because you are the Liquor Control Board also for the town. And other than that, I don't have anything else, unless anybody has anything for me.
I guess we're all good, thank you very much Deb, have a good evening.
You too, thank you.
Town Treasurer's memo?
There are two warrants this week. The payroll for the period was $8,948.04. The count payable was $157,752.88. General fund money is $15,458.56. Highway, $149,280.41. Wastewater, $1,490.55. Records restoration, $471.40. Tax payments have been coming in steadily, and the final due date is this Friday, February 10th, by 4:00 p.m. The Treasurer's Office will be closed next week, as well as Monday, the 20th, and observance of President's Day. And two maintenance requests from Julie, the programmable thermostat in her office is not working, and changing the batteries did not help, so some assistance there, and she does not know who to contact, but will need to figure out the fire extinguisher in her office, it needs to be remounted somewhere that won't hit her head, and it's currently on the floor, due to that, so, she's requesting.
Is that something that just got installed?
No, it's, there's two sets, I was in there this afternoon, there's two sets of holes on the wall, neither of them clearly were in a stud, and it's like near her printer and everything.
Oh, and it fell out of the wall?
Onto her head, well, like she, she bent over to do something instead of, and.
Ripped it right out of the wall?
Or she bumped it, and then it somehow flew off the wall, wham!
All I know is that it fell off the wall to her head, and now sits on the floor.
Okay.
So, I think, well, because John was in here today, and I think he mentioned that he could come down and do it, but we'll have to follow up with that, make sure.
Well, I know we were talking about getting someone to basically do handyman work.
Well, yeah.
And, but nobody sent me any, I was supposed to contact people, but nobody sent me contact info. Weren't you going to send me someone's contact info, Mike?
I was, didn't I send you Armstrong's? I was, didn't I send you Armstrong's?
I don't think so.
Okay. I thought I did that, and I gave it to Harley, and I was going to send it to you, and I must have forgot.
Yeah, I don't think you sent it to me.
Now, Julie said something about Matt Levine, he does kind of stuff like that. John, would John, would Matt do something like that, rehang that fire extinguisher, stuff like that, do you think?
You could ask him, like, he has quite a lot of irons in the fire. Including my snowplow in my driveway now.
Okay.
But you could ask him. Do you want his phone number?
Yes.
Okay. His phone number at home is 325-2788.
325-2788, and that's Matt, and what's his last name?
Levine.
Levine.
Capital L-E, capital V-I-T-R-E.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And so the motions that are needed for tonight are for the approval of payroll warrant 23044 for 894804, and accounts payable warrant 23045 for 15775288.
I'll make the motion of approval of warrants.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All in favor? John?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Carried?
Shall we move right along? Or are you still thinking?
Emergency Management and Health Officer, nothing, right?
No, we do.
Oh, we do.
First meeting, yeah. So Bob Morino provided a report to the board saying he is delighted to announce that Jackie Becker has joined the Politt Emergency Management Team. Initially, Jackie will be reinvigorating the sheltering program. She attended the National Weather Service Ice Spatter Training in January 10th, and Jackie and Bob attended a Rutland Regional Planning Commission Regional Sheltering Seminar, virtually on January 31st. Did you have anybody have questions on that? And Jennifer, the town health officer, said that there's been no town health officer activity since last month's report in regard to masking, the community level of COVID remains low. So masking continues to be voluntary unless required by a business or in a medical setting.
Waste water. Nothing from Jill except for some-
We have the email chain.
No, we haven't gotten any emails, but I got some texts tonight, so I will read those. And that's just happened, events that have occurred today. Okay, so this is what I got at 4:30. So the Irving technician came this afternoon and got the hot dog running, but thinks the heat exchanger is going bad, and suggests replacing the unit with an outfit that has these. I'll keep an eye on it, see how it works. So I'm not sure exactly what style heater, anything like that. And I asked if if she could get a quote. She said, I'll call their office in the morning, but it sounds like they don't do those type of heaters. So if they don't, then we'll start searching farther to see what we have to do for the for the heater. And maybe that's something that like that Capital Improvement Fund would cover, something like that.
This is for the heating for the building?
The building heat in that.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm pretty certain that we could, because there are so many grants right now and funds available for for upgrading heating systems, especially to like electric heat pump. I mean, we could probably get something like that for real cheap.
Might even be able to get rid of the propane.
Yeah, exactly.
Right, because, right, that's-
Yeah, there's going to be a lot of, a lot of funds for those.
So I'll, I'll see, we'll, we'll see what what we need to do, and then we can look into other options that will be reasonable. And we're getting power flickers at the facility again, making the pumps fail out. And she's wondering if anyone in West Politt's noticed any power flickers. We have one at our house. You notice any, Frank?
If the weather is like funky, and it's going funky, then it may flip out and come back, but that goes with the territory with snow on wires and trees and all that stuff, nothing unusual.
Nothing, nothing, nothing we've noticed any, any kind of that. The other morning, I came through and the red light was on, so I'm assuming that that, one of the pumps was out then. So she called GMP, and they're going to meet her there tomorrow and check things out to make sure we don't have anything, anything off in the, in the meter socket or anything like that. So that's, that's all we have for upgrade, any updates from there. Everything else apparently is fine. No news is good news, so. And anything from the school board? No, I said.
And facilities, we have said, I had down from the last meeting, we were going to talk about a municipal building work schedule, but we will continue those discussions next time.
Right.
Right.
So older unfinished business? Oh, right, municipal building works, I'm sorry, you just said that, and I jumped right over, just trying to race right through.
So old business, I didn't add it, oh, town hall wifi? Oh, Deb just left. Okay, so remember the town hall wifi, there were the security concerns about it?
Right.
I have no idea if anything happened.
If anything.
They were going to talk to, because the Vinnie was going to be here, so they were going to talk to him and-
Who was going to talk to him?
Julie and Deb.
Okay.
I think whoever was here.
Okay, and-
We'll find out.
Okay, Frank?
That's just like an engaging security on the thing, and so it's people have a passcode, you just publish the passcode. But there's also a way to isolate that with a firewall so that the internal network is isolated with a firewall, and that's treated like general internet.
So that's what we'll have, that's what our computer guy will figure out for, so.
A firewall would be needed. And then that you can keep it open to the public that way, because if we
So we'll, we'll get-
It will have that, but if you just isolate it.
We'll get the, we'll get him to take care of that, so.
And then the other thing for old business is this grant agreement. It's 27 pages, which I did not print out all of, but this is the sidewalk.
Sidewalk grant.
So this is the one stating that we have been awarded $400,000, and we have a $100,000 match, and the award end date is January 15th of 2027.
Okay.
So we have to sign and date that and return it.
Okay, and then we've already approved all this, and this is just a-
We, I think we, we did a vote on it back when we first got the grant, right?
Agency.
Probably.
I feel like it could hurt to-
Sure, I moved that we sign this grant agreement.
Thanks. You read my mind.
It won't, it won't hurt to have another motion to that we, that we do it.
Okay, and Bob, second it?
I'll make the move, we have the motion, I'll second it.
All in favor? John?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Bob? Carried?
All right, and since this is the grant that Rutland Regional Planning Commission is going to be managing for us, and so I was contacted a couple weeks ago by Stephanie Bork at Rutland Regional Planning Commission, and she wanted to know once we have executed the grant agreement that we send her a copy, both of the executed grant agreement and of the grant application. So I can take care of doing that, because I have copies of both those things now. And then she can go ahead and, and make a proposal for their project management services, which will be the next thing we need to do on this grant.
Would you like to send this back to Peter and
Yeah.
and the other?
Yeah, I can do that. I'll just, I'll just scan it at the end of the day and send it back.
Thank you.
Yep.
That's awesome.
Split the work.
Thanks.
Moving right along, Cannabis Control Board, so-
Okay, so did you guys see that?
I saw that application, but it, it looks like we can't really talk about anything out loud, can we?
No, so it's the same deal as the last one, so we can't give out the address. Is pretty much the only thing, I think, it's it is a cannabis establishment for a tier-two indoor cultivator, and it's called Giving Tree.
So what was that, a tier-two?
Tier-two indoor cultivator, so it's tier-one is like the least amount of plants, and so tier-two is the next level. I don't know exactly how many, but it's in, but it's an indoor cultivation, so it's-
So nobody will see anything?
Right, so there's no fields, like outdoor fields, it's like, it's all indoor. I don't know if that also includes greenhouse? I don't think so.
So-
So it's just an indoor facility of growing, so they've been approved by the state.
A greenhouse is considered outdoor?
I don't think so.
It's indoor, yeah.
Indoor, yeah. Yeah.
For zoning, is that a farm?
No. There, however, there are some, there cannabis growers are pushing to be considered farms, but they're not considered farms yet.
So how does that fit our zoning, then?
It's a commercial establishment, I guess.
To, to be a tier, so, okay.
So they, this, for this license type, the applicant has been asked to answer the following questions. Do you comply with required inspections or permits from other state and local agencies? For example, certificates of occupancy, they answered yes. Is your proposed cannabis establishment project in a public building? They answered no. Is the physical site of operation in, on a municipal water supply? The answer was no. Are you a home occupancy business? The answer was yes. All, all of the applicants are required to comply with Division of Fire Safety requirements, which is documented through a nonjurisdictional letter. In order to issue this license, the Cannabis Control Board requires the approval of the town's local control commission, just you guys. And so we need to, we as the select board need to just review that and provide the feedback. So what this means, though, is that this applicant has complied with all of the state's requirements, and so they've been preliminarily approved by the state, and now they just are requesting that the town supports. But they've provided us with all of their contact information, so if anybody wanted to reach out, we could.
So the-
Is it in a commercial or industrial?
Yeah, where, if it's, if it's a, if it's a state calls it a commercial business, is that in a, in a commercial area?
Well, they, I did note that it's, they asked if it's a home occupancy business, and it says yes. And home occupation is something that is permitted in pretty much all the zones, which means that, that the home occupation is if somebody lives on the premises, but they have like a little side business on their premises. And that is allowed in like, in every zone that we have, so.
But they need to go to Nancy for, get a permit application filed?
Yeah, I mean, everybody who has any kind of change of use has to go to Nancy to get the permit application, so.
So have they-
Do you know who this is for? Do you want to say?
Do I, yes, I do know who it's for. And that's why I'm asking some questions, because I, I don't believe everything that, that was listed on that, what you just read.
I mean, if we wanted to, we could put it on hold, we could push, bump this forward to next meeting so that someone, maybe you, could, you know, contact them or something.
Which is what we did for the last one. We were alerted of it. You were on, we did this for the last one. The board was made aware of it, and then we put it on the agenda for the following meeting, so there would be time to ask any questions, so we could do that for this one as well. But it does say that the, if a local control commission allows an application to remain undecided for 60 days, the application is presumptive, is granted, presumptively granted, so.
I mean, and we could also, it would also be possible to contact Nancy and see if she can get with this person and be like, hey, have you filled out a permit for change of use for the commercial use of your home?
All the details will be in that application.
Yeah.
Otherwise, it's just-
It's, it's, now, that's just it with the, with this, with this whole thing. Now, they say they, they've complied with all the local, so-
All the state.
All the state.
They are, they answered when asked, do you comply with required inspections or permits? They said yes. So I think that means that they've provided everything to the state to say that they have, but we can dig into it for sure.
But if they're living there, they don't need a permit, is that right?
You still do, if you have a home business.
If you have a home occupation, it's usually a permitted use, which mean, not conditional, which means all you have to do is go to Nancy and pay like, what, 30 or 60 bucks or whatever, and get a permit. I did this because at my home, I have online sales. And so I put in the permit, and I said, we're going to have online sales. So we're both a, a two-family residence and, and a home occupation. So technically, everybody in the town of Politt who has a side hustle in their house is supposed to have a permit that says they have a home occupation, but I'm sure not everybody does. And it's usually not a really big deal, but people should still do it.
Is that like a blanket permit? Meaning if you decided to start selling out of your home, like directly, like, would that cover that? Would you have to get a different permit for that?
If you actually have a shop, like when I went, opened my little barn shop, I had, I got it as a craft shop permit. So anytime that you change the use, if it changes from one to another, so if you change from home occupation to craft shop, or if you change from home occupation to like a retail store or something, you technically need to update your permit.
So if that piece of property, and I'm not sure who you're talking about, but if that place was already permitted for something different, they'd need to get another permit for this?
If it was a different use. If it was like, if they were permitted for, say, a craft shop, and their craft shop started to decide to start selling different crafts, that would be fine, they wouldn't need to change their permit. But if they then decided to open an auto repair shop, then they'd have to get a new permit. It's if, under the list of uses, if the use changes.
And you can get as many permits as you want?
I mean, as many as, if it's just a permitted use, you just have to tell the zoning administrator, and as long as the zoning administrator doesn't see anything egregiously wrong with it, they'll give it to you. If it's a conditional use, which most of the more intensive uses are, if it's a conditional use, then it goes to the DRB.
I don't think that this location is actually being lived in, though, which is-
If it's not being lived in, it can't be a home occupation.
Right, so I wonder if that was-
The name on the applicant doesn't live at the address that that, that they've listed on that.
That doesn't mean that they couldn't get a permit for commercial use at their place, they just have to go get the permit.
Right.
Is it close to being a Route 149?
We can't talk about where it is.
Right.
But if that's an industrial zone, if that were the case, if we're in an industrial zone or a commercial zone-
So depending on, they, they have to comply with, with the zoning of, of, of where the, this tends to go, okay?
The only ones exempt are like schools and the state goes like that, farms, farms.
I'll, I'll reach out to Nancy and, and start this ball rolling, but-
Yeah.
Oh, boy. There's a little FYI. If anybody's offering a home occupation or any, a home, a, a home business, blah, 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 they really need a business owner's policy and a tenant homeowner's policy for your own contents, because there's court cases where delivery people have gone to deliver like FedEx or UPS, and they slipped on ice- like FedEx or UPS and they slipped on ice and they hurt themselves. The homeowner's policy didn't pay the liability. There was no insurance because it didn't have a business owner's policy, which the homeowner's policy isn't excluded for business activities. So, this, and some insurance agents aren't clued in on this and they put this little rider on it that does nothing, okay? But they need a FOP and it actually gives them replacement income. If the place was burned down, if you run in a business, you might have a continuing income, which is a great policy for that and is expensable totally. And then you do a tenant homeowner, that's on the premises and the business and then your own personal stuff gets insured through a-
Thank you.
But that would be how people should set it up.
Anything else under new business?
I do have something very brief under new business. I was just contacted by Jackie Casino, who is the, who is the V-Trans person who is in charge of the rail trail program. And she wants to just touch base with me later this week about a couple of things. One, she wants to talk about our Vermont Outdoor Recreation Communities Grant, which is still in the process of getting finally signed. She also wants to talk about an amenities guide that they're developing for rail trail amenities and how we might tie into that, especially with the work we're doing with West Pollet, with the, the planning process there. And she also wants to talk about upcoming general maintenance activities on our part of the rail trail. So, I said I would meet with her at the end of this week to just go over those things and I can report back on what she says. I just wanted to check if there's anything else that we as a board want to talk to her about regarding the rail trail.
That building. That belongs to them.
That building?
The one across from the sewer plant.
I will-
The property belongs to them. We were supposed to sell it.
Okay, I can bring that up. I can find out what's the status on that.
Well, because-
Cause it's in bankruptcy right now, right?
That's where it got all convoluted, because then it got sold with a deed and then they went into bankruptcy and that's been in bankruptcy longer than I've been on the board.
So, so she's new to this, she just took over this rail trail stuff. V-Trans just took it over last year, so she probably doesn't know a lot about that. So, just to make sure that I have this straight to tell to her, the building, the, the property the building sits on, I know is in the V-Trans right away.
Belongs to, right.
And V-Trans also owns the building?
Who ran it?
They owned the land and under it and the building was supposed to get removed.
Okay.
Technically, they own the building.
So, the building is in bankruptcy still?
We, we, the town, apparently, they had, they told us to get rid of it. And when it was sold, it was transferred, not just sold as a building to be removed. And then that person went into bankruptcy and it's, it's been there ever since.
Right, okay.
So, just, just to get their take on it, just to get it on their radar.
That we, that there's this issue and it's just continuing to be ongoing.
Since you're on this, you want me to-
Public comment? Public comment?
On the comment, on the building is, when's the next potluck?
I don't know off the top of my head, I'm sorry Frank.
Anyway, the next potluck is the village store concept. That's the theme of it, I believe. And one of the concepts, this is repurposing that building, moving it. And one of the concepts brought up was that part of, majority of the Ducky's property to the south, there's a big piece there, could have something moved to that potentially because you're not gonna need anything but where the foundation is for the, for expanding and stuff that got developed, I wouldn't imagine. So, that would be positioned near parking and things like this. It could be a community building. You could have all kinds of functions in it, that type of thing, and that's a question that will be brought up during this next meeting, because it was briefly brought up at the last one.
Okay. Anything else under pub, public comment?
Oh, we're on public comment?
Yep.
Well, the, we've got a dinner coming up, potluck. Everybody, the luck has been pretty well intended and I think that what we're paying Michael to do this work, he's been doing a half a bit of that.
Good. Okay. Do you wanna go to discuss labor relations?
I, I move that we enter executive session.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
All in favor? John?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Rich, Bob?